Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council Meeting. Tonight is Monday, June 24th. Audra, can you have the record show that our city attorney, city planner, city engineer, along with all council members are present? Absen this evening is our Assistant City Administrator, and our city administrator is present. At this time, I'll ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
By allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business is the open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Seeing no one, we will move on to item two to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time? Motion would be in order then?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Brittany.
I'll move to approve the agenda as written.
Second. Motion by Brittany, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item is our consent agenda. A motion would be in order?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Brittany.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item is our 2023 audit. I will turn this over to Adam, and I believe Nancy is online.
Mayor, that is correct. I'm having one minor technical difficulty here.
Okay. Let's hope it's just minor.
I think I'll be able to do this. Okay, I will make my part short. But so tonight, we have Nancy from Bergen KDB here to present the results of the 2023 audit. In your packet for this meeting, there was a resolution to consider adopting the financial statements as official financial record for 2023. There was a communications letter printed by the audit firm. There was some scheduled federal expenditures and three sets of compliance reports. The actual financial statements are rather large, so they were available in electronic format only. So with that, I will introduce Nancy. We have a slideshow here that we'll walk through, and then the council can ask any questions, so.
All right, thanks, Adam. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council and administration. Thank you for giving me some time to go over the results of our audit this evening. So I want to talk about the the communications that we issue as part of the audit. And to start with, our opinion on your financial statement. So one more slide, Adam. There we go. So our opinion is found in the front of the financial statement document. It's three pages long, and it includes a lot of discussion about the work that we do as auditors and various levels of assurance that we provide. The most important paragraph in that letter is going to be the second paragraph. If you choose to read it in its entirety, but what I want to say tonight is that we're issuing an unmodified opinion, which is the best that we as your auditors can offer. It is an indication that the financial statements are fairly presented based on the results of the audit work that we completed. So that is a clean opinion, if you will. And then we have those other compliance reports that Adam also mentioned. So the first one is our report on our results in accordance with government auditing standards. These standards are a little bit more in-depth than the generally accepted auditing standards, and they require us to take a look at internal control and gain an understanding of the internal control and also test for compliance. And based on that, we have the one lack of segregation of accounting duties finding. That's not new for Atsigo, not at all uncommon for a city of your size, and the same as it was presented last year. And then we did not have any compliance findings as it relates to those standards. We have a couple other compliance reports. The next one is our report in accordance with Uniform Guidance. So Uniform Guidance is the report and the work that we did related to the federal funding that the city received. And happy to report, we're issuing an unmodified opinion on compliance for the federal funds that we tested and also no internal control findings as it relates to that compliance. So completely clean report when it comes to the federal funds. And then finally, our last official report is in accordance with the Minnesota legal compliance. And that comes to us right from the Office of the State Auditor of Minnesota, and we test six broad categories of legal compliance based on how those statutes relate to accounting matters and no findings there as well. So just the one written finding for the entire audit. So congratulations on that. And then we have a communication letter, and that's a separate document. And in there, we have several pieces. First of all, there's a required communication portion. And those are things that our standards require us to put in writing to you as the governing body for the city of Atsigo. And it would be our tool or vehicle, if you will, for anything significant that we uncovered, any difficulties or disagreements with management. Again, goes over responsibilities and some other things, but happy to report that nothing strays from our standard language in that section of the communication letter. And then we have financial analysis that we'll cover tonight. So moving then to the financial analysis, we have several charts and graphs to take a look at the general fund as the operating fund of the city. So starting out real high level, total revenues, total expenditures, and fund balance for each of the last five years. And we do present five years for most of these charts and graphs, but we'll key in for tonight's discussion on the changes between 2022 and 2023. So when we look at this, revenues were up 4.1% and expenditures up 8.9%. We'll get into the details of that as we move forward. After factoring in and out other financing sources and uses, the fund balance increased by just $30,000 overall. And when we look at that fund balance and we compare that to next year's budget, it's about 52.9%. So I believe you have a minimum of 45%, so in compliance with the policy that you have set for yourselves. Moving then to the revenues, starting with the sources of revenue for each of the last five years. And again, keying into the difference between '22 and '23, you did have a 4.1% increase overall for about $324,000. And almost all of the categories had some pretty significant fluctuations. So if we start just on the top there and look at investment income, that was a negative last year because you had recognized an unrealized loss on your investments. Market conditions were different at the end of 2023, and you had an unrealized gain. So a big swing, about $445,000 increase there. Intergovernmental, down just a couple, increased by about $468,000, primarily related to the one-time public safety aid that you received in December of 2023. Charges for services and licenses and permits actually decreased based on reduced development within the city for the year. Those were down about $204,000 and $579,000 respectively. And then on the bottom there, your taxes did increase about $224,000 just based on the change in the levy for the year. And when we look at those sources as a percentage of the whole for each of the last two years, several of the categories are pretty consistent, but you will see a swing between your intergovernmental revenue and the licenses and permits. So when we take a look at licenses and permits, significant developments and fees collected in that area for 2022, dropping as we saw on the previous page for 2023. And then on the flip side of that, your intergovernmental was 1.4% last year, up to 7.1% with that one-time public safety aid that you received. And then one last look at your revenues on a budget-to-actual comparison in this chart. So overall, revenues were over budget about 500,000 or 6.5%. The overages come in two categories. First, investment income that is budgeted conservatively and did outpace that budget by about $219,000. And then intergovernmental over budget related to that, again, one-time public safety aid. So that you see that in a lot of different places. And then under budget licenses and permits, under about 150 related to the smaller amount of development. And then taxes under budget anticipating collecting the entire levy and not collecting everything for the current year. Switching gears then to expenditures, we have similar type charts. So overall expenditures were up a bit more than revenues, 8.9% or $629,000. A few categories contributing to that. First of all, general government, that was up about 104 related to wages and benefits. Public safety up about $245,000 related to the increase in the county contract for that public safety services. Public Works up about $190,000 related to additional staff and additional vehicles. And also snowplowing from the previous year, so that 2022-2023 winter had some increased costs there. And then Parks and Recs, you had additional programming, additional full-time staff needed, so that category was also up. So kind of across the board when you look at the increase in the expenditures. Two pie charts on the next slide, similar to the revenues. We're showing you where the money was spent. But these are very similar year over year. Those percentages don't fluctuate much at all. So you're very consistent in the spending of the funds that you received. And then we have budget-to-actual for the expenditure side of things. So expenditures under budget, actually about 239,000 or 3%. Two categories contributing most significantly to that. General government, under about 105,000 related to unused contingencies that were built into the budget. And then public safety, under about $83,000 related to fewer building inspection costs along with that smaller amount of development in the year. So that is the general fund. Next slide takes a look at your tax capacity, your levy and your rates. So the blue that starts out in the middle and ends up on the top on the right side, that's your total tax capacity, and you can see that increased significantly over the last five years, about 69% or just under 13 million. The bottom line is your levy, so you see an increase there, a slow but steady increase, increasing 39% or 2.6 million overall. So that increase being much less than the tax capacity increase. Your rate went from 36.06 in 2019 down to 29.57 in 2023. And then we have the enterprise fund. So what we're showing you here is really high-level operating results. And then we also show you operating income with and without depreciation. So depreciation is a non-cash expenditure. It's estimating a useful life of the assets and then writing those assets off over that estimated useful life. So it's interesting to see in this fund, you have been covering all of your operating expenses, including that depreciation. So allowing for that non-cash item to be covered by operating revenues as well. And when we look at changes, operating revenues were up about 21%. You had increased customers, increased usage, and increased rates contributing to that. The expenses in this fund up about 7.9%, so much smaller increase there than the revenues. And that had to do with the well-field study and some increased depreciation expense. So overall, you had operating income of just under 1.2 million, which is the highest in the five years that are presented here. And if you look at bottom line in this fund, the overall net position did increase about 3 million because below this, you have your connection fees and also developer contributions coming into the fund, contributing to the position of the fund at year end. And then we have the sewer fund. Similar picture here, so a nice increase in your operating revenues, about 15.4%. Again, customers were up, usage was up, and rates were up. And then a much smaller increase in the expenses here as well related to depreciation and then also utility and chemical costs with inflation. And this fund also is covering all of the depreciation with the operating revenues. When we look at the bottom line of this fund, your net position increased 5.8 million. And again, a lot of that having to do with those connection fees and developer contributions. And then your last enterprise fund is the stormwater fund, a little bit of a different picture here. Significant operating expenses, including that depreciation amount. So revenues were up about 4.9%, expenses up about 2.6%, and operating loss when we consider depreciation and an operating income when we factor out depreciation. So still allowing for a positive cash flow from operations in this fund. And bottom line here, your net position did increase, and you don't have connection charges in this fund, but you do have contributors from developer, contributions from developers and also governmental funds related to capital assets. So sitting in a positive position at year end as well. And that is the information that I have. Any questions or anything that you'd like more detail on?
Council's questions for Nancy?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, right.
Nancy, on our, in our printout, it's in the required communication. It's like the third, fourth page of that. It's page six in our printed handout.
Okay.
On the bottom, there's an uncorrected or mis- uncorrected and corrected misstatements, and there's just a bullet point that says right-to-use assets and lease liabilities are understated. Can you explain that?
Sure. So when we plan our audit, we determine materiality levels and small items that we find aren't required to be corrected because they're not materially misstating the financial statements. So last year, we had the implementation of GAZB-87, which was the recording of a right-to-use asset and a lease liability. So the city has a very small amount that you have chosen not to record. And basically, that nets to a zero net position change on the government-wide statements. So it falls below the materiality threshold. And so our opinion doesn't change, but we are required to present that to you.
Is, so there's no corrective action for that?
No.
Okay.
No. You don't remember the amount? I don't know if you do, Adam, but it was very small.
Mayor, council, an example of something like that would be a lease for a copy, a copy machine, scanner machine that, you know, historically, we treated these as monthly annual operating costs. Now with new accounting standards, they require you to recognize whether there's a lease liability or a lease receivable associated with that. And as Nancy mentioned, the materiality of these monthly lease payments on a copier machine doesn't significantly impact the financial statement.
Okay. I just have one more question, and probably for Adam, but on the depreciation for the water, for the, sorry, for the street.
Stormwater.
Stormwater, thank you. How does that get calculated?
So depreciation on an asset, since we're talking about the stormwater, most of the assets the city has in that fund are contributed from a developer. So as they're putting a stormwater pond in a neighborhood or culverts under the street, all of that system is valued and then contributed to the city. We then depreciate that over. Stormwater is probably a 40-year useful life. And so as each year comes a new developer contribution, there's more and more depreciation. So of our operating expenses, depreciations, I don't have the number in front of me, but I'd say it's probably 75% or more is a non-cash expense for that fund. And rate increases have not kept up with fully funding that depreciation well.
Yeah, stormwater is a tough one because you do have all those contributions coming in. The depreciation is 194,000 of the 224,000. So yeah, it's making up a very large portion of the operating expenses in that fund.
What are, what are the, so I'm assuming that the other operating expenses for that would just be sort of maintenance, you know, manhole cover replacement, that kind of stuff. But am I reading correctly that the that the fund covers the depreciation, or is that not correct?
It does not. The operating income would not cover depreciation and fall in the stormwater pond where it does in water and sewer.
Okay. So is it fair to say that there's a potential? I mean, if we're depreciating because we think that's the life of those assets, what we're saying is there's a potential risk there that we don't have the funds necessary to cover the life of a broken storm sewer.
Correct.
But that's if the whole system failed, wouldn't that?
Well, the whole system as of what we're depreciating it at.
For sure.
So it's, and if you remember back to the budget conversation for 2024, there was a staff recommendation to increase rates in the stormwater utility by 24%. And that was not what the council adopted. But it will take a significant rate adjustment to reflect covering that depreciation, one, to catch up, and two, to make sure that you're keeping current with that on a year-to-year basis.
And, and help me remember, how are developers assessed for this?
So in most cases, developers are paying for this, much like they would for installing a street or a sidewalk in the neighborhood, but there is a value to that. And then the city takes ownership of that once the development is complete, and then we are responsible for maintenance and future replacement.
Okay, so I think is, do they make like a couple of years' worth of payments essentially?
They actually pay for installation of the infrastructure.
And then that's it? There's no fee or anything?
They do pay a stormwater, in stormwater case, there is a stormwater impact charge that pays for future projects that we've had. For example, a public works-up committee a few months ago. We talked about that study, which was actually on the agenda here this evening as well.
Yep, yep, okay.
But those, those are housed outside of the stormwater utility fund. They're housed in a stormwater impact watershed district fund.
So then they're not showing up in this?
Yeah, it, it is something that we, we've talked about in past budget years about combining all of the stormwater funds to be more similar to how we do the water availability and sewer availability charges that do reflect those connection fees. So with those, there's still a non-operating revenue, so it wouldn't change the look of that graph necessarily. But the, the net position or net assets of the fund would be higher.
Do you know roughly how much higher off the top of your head?
I can look it up. The fund balance of the watershed district fund is at $1,991,000. That's just around.
Sure, okay. But that, wouldn't that put us in the positive? Am I, is my math?
It would not. So on the operating statement for the proprietary funds, capital contributions such as impact fees or developer contributions that we were talking about earlier show up below the operating section of the statement.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions?
I have nothing else to add, Mayor. There is a resolution in the packet if the council would like to consider that. Once approved, we would submit the report to the GFOA for the certificate of achievement. We would submit our compliance reports to the state auditor, post the report on the city website and any other year-end reporting that we need to file.
All right, if no one has any other questions, then a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, right.
A motion to adopt Resolution 2024-45, adopting the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended December 31st, 2023.
Second, motion by Tina, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor, real quick.
Yes.
Are we? With this resolution, we also accepting? Yeah, adopting the annual comprehensive financial report. I just had a quick comment on that or a question, I guess.
Sure.
On, on our actual annual comprehensive financial report, page 41, we kind of talked about this a little bit in the EDI meeting. I guess I would say just I'm concerned that the statement that is there does not align with the EDAs establishing resolution and then the statute that we talked about as well, which is mirrored in the establishing resolution. So in particular, I'm concerned that the statute tells us that we must permit comparison and reconciliation. And at the same time, the statement in the financial report says that we would not prepare financial statements, even if there was financial activity.
Mayor, I can clarify that. So the city maintains, you know, roughly 25 to 30 different funds. So the EDA is considered a blended component unit. And if there were significant financial activity, an adopted levy for the EDA budgets, it would be reported as a separate column within the financial statements of the city. So there would not be a separate document or a separate report solely for the purpose of the EDA. It would be encompassed within the city's annual report as a separate fund or a separate department line item detail within the general fund. So you would still be able to make those comparisons with previous year data, see fund balances, see incoming revenues, outgoing expenditures. So it just won't be an entirely separate document.
That makes sense. So when I was saying earlier that it must, it must permit comparison and reconciliation, I'm sort of imagining that it would be kind of like we see in the financial reports, that there's a separate column that says this is the EDA, and it would have expenditures, revenue, everything along those lines, we'd be able to reconcile that. Inter-fund transfers, things like that would be included.
Correct.
Okay, okay. That addresses my concern. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Give a motion and any more?
Yes.
In a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 5.1 under the public hearings. R and L carriers, I'll turn this over to Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. Our L carriers planted a lot for development of their cross-dock facility at the south east corner of County Road 38 and Queens Avenue. They've just started construction on the site and at the same time came back to receive approval to expand the building further to the east. When they planted the lot, they dedicated drainage and utility easement over the water lines within the lot that provide fire service around the building. The east line of that drainage and utility easements would be below the building. And so then there is the need to vacate this easement and then reestablish a new easement by document based on the layout of the new building. So city staff is recommending holding a public hearing to consider the vacation. It is necessary to allow for the building expansion. There will be new drainage and utility easements placed, and therefore, the existing easement serves no purpose and can be vacated. So city staff is recommending adoption of Resolution 2024-46.
Thank you. Audra, have all the publications been made?
Yes, thank you.
Have we made, have we received any comments?
And no comments have been received.
And at this time, I will open up the public hearing for R and L carriers. You can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Any comments regarding R and L carriers? Ask one more time, any more, any comments? One more time, any comments? At this time, I will close the public hearing and bring it back up to council for discussion or motion. Does anyone have any questions for staff on this?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, right.
Just a quick comment. I, I forgot to mention this the last time. R and L carriers, when we last decided on their construction that they're doing, at the planning commission, it was commented that R and L carriers met with local residents. Actually flew out and spent an hour, possibly longer with them, talking about the construction and how they were going to move things around to not disrupt the residents. And I just want to extend my appreciation for that. It's something that was very cool to hear, so.
I would agree.
With that, I will move to adopt Resolution 2024-46, vacating existing drainage and utility easements dedicated within the RLC addition.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 5.2 is a temporary provision of cannabis business. I'll turn this over to Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. In 2023, the state adopted statutes 342, legalizing cultivation, growing, production, and sale of cannabis products as well as personal use and establishing 14 definitions of various cannabis-based businesses that would receive licenses from the state. So the regulation framework established by the statute is basically the business applies for a license to the state. State does its evaluation. There is a local registration component where the city or county has to sign off on compliance with the zoning ordinance, compliance with the building code, and that property tax. Uh, compliance with the zoning ordinance, compliance with the building code, and that property taxes have been uh, paid to date. Uh, this is being implemented effective as of January first, twenty twenty-five for retail sales. But this last session, the um, legislature amended the statute. Uh, to provide for uh, issuance of licenses to select cultivation businesses. Meeting certain criteria set forth by the statute. The intent being that these businesses could establish start growing product that would then be available for sale. Uh, where this leaves the city uh, in terms of its regulations is. Uh, the statutes provide uh, some general parameters to the extent to which cities can regulate this. Cities cannot prohibit cannabis businesses, must make allowance for it through their zoning ordinance. Uh, there are a number of registrations that can be limited either based on population of the city. Or of the county entirely uh, that city is located within. Uh, but any regulations that are established need to be time, place and manner type restrictions. These are basically zoning requirements. Uh, so looking at which zoning districts the various businesses would be assigned to. Uh, for example, you allow a cultivation business, potentially agriculture like the current medical cannabis use. Or uh, industrial districts since there's likely to be enclosed. Uh, processing and production and maybe a same industrial district, office warehousing, retail sales, obviously in a retail zoning district. Um, there's a question as to whether the use is allowed as a permitted conditional or interim use uh, that would need to be resolved. And then in terms of setbacks, the statute provides that the city can impose a thousand-foot setback for retail uses from schools, five hundred feet from daycare. Residential facilities and parks and also establish limitations on hours. The reason for the proposed interim ordinance uh, this evening, a lot of cities have adopted this. Otsego is held off. Uh, until this point because staff didn't feel it was necessary, but the change to allow for issuance of cannabis licenses kind of. Uh, forces our hand in this because zoning ordinance hasn't been amended yet to say where that you should be allowed within Otsego. Part of that goes back to the state that cities have been waiting for direction from the Office of Cannabis Management. They're actually writing the rules uh, for this because state regulations take two forms. You have statute. And then there's rules that are set up uh, for the individual administrative department that are more detailed as to. How this is supposed to function. Well, they're still doing that, given uh, the. Adoption of the, the statute. Uh, we're looking for direction from them as to procedures because there is an inspection. Component that's required in compliance checks. Uh, and then just simply some basic guidance. Uh, it would be typical. For example, with the floodplain ordinance that was adopted at the last council meeting, DNR provides a model ordinance that says. Here's what the statute says, here's what you can regulate, here's the format you should use. Well, we don't have that today, so. Uh, we were hoping we would have that, um, but it appears necessary to move forward, uh, at least initially on our own. So this proposed interim ordinance, otherwise known as a moratorium, would prohibit any new cannabis business from locating in the city. So it would not affect uh, the medical cannabis user or anybody selling low potency THC within the city currently. Uh, it can only be effective through uh, December of this year. Uh, because of the statutory requirement that retail sales start January first. Uh, if we have the zoning ordinance amendments in place that can be repealed before that time. Uh, and that would likely be advantageous from an economic development standpoint to have the regulations in place. Let these businesses know, especially on the manufacturing and processing side. Where appropriate locations are for them to go because those uh, would be high-quality, high-value. Jobs and um, business locations such as the existing medical cannabis user that we have in the city today. So what the city needs to do during this moratorium is uh, develop regulations through the zoning ordinance. Uh, that would be reviewed by the planning commission to make recommendations to the city council. And there's also the need to work through this administration process. The biggest challenge really is going to be the compliance checks. As with alcohol or tobacco licensing. It's required that at least once a year, the city or issuing agency go. Do a compliance check for age verification. Uh, the city is obviously not equipped to do that, so there have been discussions that. There would be partnership with Wright County to assume responsibility for that, and those discussions are ongoing and haven't been resolved as of yet. So the recommendation, uh, this uh, proposed interim ordinance does require a public hearing. That's unusual. In the case of a moratorium put in place for a zoning type action, for example prohibiting subdivisions or prohibiting other activities. No public hearings required, uh, but it's specific in the statute that this is necessary. Uh, city staff is recommending approval of the interim ordinance based on the need for Office of Cannabis Management to complete their work. Uh, the planning commission to undertake their work and make recommendations to the coun- city council. Uh, and then also for uh, determination on how administration and inspections are going to be handled. So we are recommending adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh eight temporarily prohibiting operation of cannabis businesses within the city.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing. You can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak? In regards to this? I'll ask again, any public comment? One more time, any public comment? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and move it back up to council for questions or comments or a motion. Council questions for staff?
Madam Mayor. Not questions, but just I think this is a. A good thing to have in place for right now. I think it's uncharted territory and. I think there's a lot of unknowns yet still, so. I'm thankful that we have the moratorium for right now. And with that, if there's no other comments, I will.
Ryan, do you have some comments?
Yeah, I was, I wanted to ask um, if we received any email comments?
No.
Okay.
Um, none to me.
I remember uh, reading in one of our communications that there was a business that was interested. Am I correct in that?
Uh, city planner like might be able to better answer. I just believe it was an inquiry to see if there was any existing.
Correct. Quick trip was considering uh, offering THC beverages.
Yeah, so.
So, um. I, I'm trying to understand. What the. Differences are. Because we can only have a moratorium until December thirty-first. After December thirty-first, we can't do anything because the licenses go into effect January first supposedly. I don't think they will, but. That's the date that they will start being able to issue licenses. We have no control of the licenses. Uh, we can't zone these businesses out of existence. Um, so the moratorium is really, at this point. The only thing it would do is prevent. Cultivation licenses? We can't, we can't stop uh, business licenses. I, I'm, I'm struggling to see the point of this.
Mayor, the point of it is we don't want a cultivation business necessarily opening in the target outlots potentially. Uh, the planning commission needs an opportunity to weigh in and decide where each of these fourteen businesses is appropriately located. There's also the need to decide what setbacks, if they should be applied, et cetera. So. The, the statute provides the framework, um, but we need to have these in place to be able to administer and enforce it.
If a business decided to open up. Or it's not even a business, it's a, it's a cult, a cultivation business. Decided to open up in the target parking lot, they wouldn't be able to sell their product. They don't have a license to sell.
The point is that you'd have an agricultural use in a retail district, basically. They can't sell it, but the point is that they can start growing it to be sold. So. It'd be a question of, is that an appropriate use at a given location? So without this moratorium and without having the zoning ordinances in place. Planning commission and city council have not decided which zoning districts within the city, these fourteen businesses each belong.
I, I'm, I'm struggling to understand. If it's a cultivation business, it's, it still has to be within the farming. The agricultural zone, right?
Not necessarily. It's because it's specifically divi- defined as a use. You're going to define this differently than growing corn, for example. It's defined as such by statute, and it's regulated under a different statute. The statute says the city must allow it.
So therefore we should take the time and diligence and do our diligence to fight. And discuss where to put. Something like this.
I, I guess my comment to that would be there's been plenty of time. I, I. To me, I'm struggling with this a little bit because, I mean, we have a business in Otsego. In fact. Otsego was the first to have a.
One of.
A cannabis business. Within its city boundaries, in fact, and. We were the first in the metro area to have a CBD store. We've taken eighty thousand dollars from the cannabis industry in donations. It seems a little hypocritical for us to now turn around and say. We shouldn't allow these kinds of businesses for four months.
Madam Chair, that was a deliberate action of the council to allow that business based on. They came to the city, said, we are interested in locating this here. Planning commission and city council considered how best to allow for it, amended the zoning ordinance. Then processed the application under the zoning ordinance to allow for it. So it was a conscientious decision to allow that business. As for the CBD store being low potency, that's basically allowed currently under the law. It wouldn't be subject to this. Moratorium and it was. Basically treated as any other type of retail store. And not addressed as a specific zoning criteria. So this is a different situation. This is in fact more like when. MidMed came to the city and said, we're interested in being in your city. Where do you think it's appropriate and what standards apply to them?
In, in terms of the time comment, there, there are no rules available from the Office of Cannabis Management, so. I don't think. Time is necessarily why the zoning ordinances haven't been put in place.
I, I did also check with our neighboring cities, Elk River, Monticello, Albertville, Rogers, St. Michael. I'll have them in place.
A lot of cities have, have done these interim ordinances, but they really don't have any effect because they have to end. By the time the licenses start, so it really doesn't have very much of an effect.
The different.
I'm not a fan of ordinances. I'm really not a fan of ordinances that don't do anything.
When I reached out to those cities and asked, they have retail space available and they were concerned about. For them, it was what the shops look like, and everyone said we've gotten no direction from the state.
Mayor, the, the only reason we haven't done anything in terms of the ordinance, because we have brought this to administrative subcommittee several times, and it's simply that. Office of Cannabis Management cannot provide any direction as to the rules that apply to this. That are beyond the statute, so.
And when we also asked about the county, uh, what. They're willing to do for enforcement of testing and checking, we don't have a clear answer from them yet either, so. I'm, we're supporting businesses coming here, but when there's things in place, we don't want them going somewhere that they shouldn't be. And, and the planning commission has not looked at this, as Dan said.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Brittany.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero eight temporarily prohibiting operation of cannabis businesses in approved publication in summary form.
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Dan, my question too, as you've heard our discussion tonight, when will this be brought to planning commission for further review with them?
Uh, Mayor, I'd expect that we'd have it on August meetings to uh, to start that discussion. Essentially, what we presented to the administrative subcommittee in February is the outline of the discussion that we would bring to the planning commission.
Mayor, I can also tell you that.
Yes.
I think the Office of Cannabis Management, I think is either. Getting close to or actually does finally have a model ordinance, which they've been working on for many months. So that might allow local planning commissions to start taking a closer look at this because I think the model ordinance just. Got finalized last week, as I recall, so. I mean, everyone's kind of upset with how slow the state is moving on this, but I think they did make some progress last week.
Madam Mayor, I was just going to ask Dan if he would maybe update us as soon as maybe there's more clear.
We can do that.
All right, moving on to item six point one, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program. I'll turn this over to Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is our annual um, MS four review. And uh, it also has a public hearing after it for anyone that wants to speak. Uh, this goes over the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program. And what the. What the city does is we have to keep track of all the uh, items that the MPCA would like us to. Uh, reviewing all of the development that goes on and making sure that best management practices towards uh, stormwater. Is uh, applied, and then ongoing through that would be also inspection of all stormwater. Outfalls and stormwater. Skimmer structures and such at ponds to ensure that those are uh, kept in good working order and maintained. Uh, if. Go forward to through the slides, the first one is our outfalls. These are all the locations that go. Into the rivers and creeks that of, of, that are uh, major creeks. We have Otsego Creek that has quite a bit of development along it. Uh, near Albertville where you can see all those outfalls from the, those all have to be reviewed every single year to make sure that they are. Uh, maintained, and then we have some going out to uh, the Mississippi River and the Crow River at some locations. We also have a skimmer structure and storm ponds and. We have keep maps of those. Um, up, ongoing, and you can see all of the skimmer structures in the west and the east side of town. There's quite a few of them. And each, each of those have to be reviewed uh, twenty percent every given year. And then next is uh, storm, some example of all our storm ponds on the east side. And again, the outfalls of those have to be reviewed and just the storm pond itself to make sure that the sediment isn't uh. Building up in them, and then we'd have to clean them out. So, uh, whenever a developer comes into town, they have to, we, we hand them this brochure. It goes through how. The total area of that project site is required to, of course, meet all those uh, stormwater pollution prevention. Which would be the silk fence that you see surrounding those. Um, projects, but the, even when they get divided to areas under one acre. Uh, point three acres, this still applies, and this basically shows though developers that although. The uh, each home plot is under an acre, they still are required to meet those requirements because it came in. As a larger parcel and was uh. It met the one-plus acre requirement. And this just shows all the items that to that developer that would need to be handled, their waste. Uh, the self-fence going around, making sure their stormwater is contained on the site that any. Uh, topsoil or, or piles are also contained and are seeded if they are not moved within uh. It's either seven days or fourteen days depending on how close they are to the Mississippi River. Uh, this just gives them a, a blueprint of what we're looking for, and then the city's departments. Um, the engineering department. The building officials department, we review these uh, to make sure that they're in place. Also, we have some help from the. Utility department and the public works department, so it's a team effort to make sure that all these things are, are maintained. So then we also have an education component to this, so we send out brochures and we also have uh, items that go into. Your uh, Otsego view so that all the residents of the city understand best management practices in accordance with the. Pet waste, motor oil, fertilizer, all that. Uh, goes into the stormwater system and it, for people to realize that uh, you know. Taking care of that correctly will really help out our overall environment. So then, like I said, twenty percent of our. Skimmer structures on these storm ponds are reviewed each year. Before I, we had maps that had photos of the uh, infractions that were handed to the. City staff to go out and, and do the work. Um, now it's all in cloud-based. It just makes it a lot cleaner. We have this map here. They can click onto each one of those, any one of those. Uh, points, and this is an example of one of those points is the next slide where one of our. Instruction observers goes out and reviews this uh, skimmer structure. It's a SK number at the top. Uh, gives it uh, conditions good. In this case, a small tree was growing inside. They, they take a photo of that. They write that down. And then at the bottom, you can see it says not completed, so uh, city staff with their i- iPad. Be out field, click on that button, see what's done, and then in the bottom, once they've completed that uh, task, can put that it's been completed. And it's a good way to, to uh, keep track of things without the paperwork involved. It's just all kept on the cloud. So that's. A new system for us, and we think it's working well, and I know. involved. It's just all kept on the cloud. So that's a new system for us and we think it's working well. And I know the city staff like it. Um, again, like we talked earlier about storm water utility fees and part of that, uh, uh, discussion of the audit. Uh, the, these are all paid by that storm water utility fee that, uh, citizens are paying. And, uh, and so it's, it's the inspection of it, the keeping of all the records of it, the education portion of it. And, um, then the maintenance of it. So it's a quite a bit of a component and that's, you know, and then there's also the, uh, depreciation of the storm water system itself. And that's what those storm water utilities are intended to pay for. And, and that's why we were looking for an increase in those numbers to, uh, help keep up with the, uh, depreciation of them and the ongoing cost of the maintenance of these structures. With that, I'll let the mayor open up the public hearing.
Okay.
Unless there's any questions from council.
Ron, I do have, Mayor, I have one question here. Is, it, does this reflect like, um, water runoff from sub pumps? Or is that something separate?
Um, it, that is a storm water component because we don't want it in our sanitary sewer system. So yes, it is.
Okay. Just want to clarify that.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Are we allowed to ask questions before the?
Um, Mayor, council, it's technically not a public hearing. You're just taking public comments. It wasn't something that was noticed or that there, you need to.
Yeah, I think it used to be a required public hearing. I do have a quick question. That's why I asked. Um, if you could go back to the slide that is, uh, it showed some of the storm ponds. Um, yeah, one of these. What is the, what is the boundary indicate there?
Oh, I think that's our twenty percent of one given here.
Okay, so it's the quadrant, you're kind of, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we will open the public comments or take public comments since it's a public hearing, uh, regarding the storm water pollution prevention program. Again, come to the podium, state your name and address. Does anyone have any comments regarding our storm water pollution prevention program? Right? There is no comments. Bring it back up to the council that we don't need to approve anything. We just accept your presentation. Does anyone have any additional comments regarding this?
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Right. Moving on to city council reports and updates, our first would be heritage preservation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, our last meeting, we are we have locked in some names to bring to Park and Rec or Ashwood Park. Um, I believe Nick will be very excited, very excited for those. So bring those to commissioners when we meet in July.
Thank you. Next is the Park and Rec Commission.
Uh, we did not meet this month because there was no forum. So again, that's, we'll look forward to meeting them with them in July.
Great. Planning Commission, uh, that's me. Uh, at our first meeting in June, we had Costco, Mississippi Landing, R and L carriers, which we just approved tonight and uh, the updates to the floodplain map. Next, public safety. Tina was not present. I was there. Um, one thing that came out of that is an invitation, um, Daryl's here, so he'll talk about items for, on his side of things, but North Star Regional Treatment Facility had reached out to me. Um, they are inviting the full council and the commission. So we are requesting that they will be moving their July ninth meeting to North Star Regional Treatment Center at six thirty. Um, Adra, if you can plan to post that as a forum. And if everyone could get your R C P to Adra, if you're able to attend, they're looking to just get a, a head count for us. So we would start at six thirty our regular time. Um, the commission that was present is aware of it and we will make sure that we send out an invitation for them. But if you could gather those numbers, Adra, and then get the information to me.
We can do that.
Thank you. Um, but if you could mark your calendars and try to attend, we have had over the years, some, um, comments made by the Wright County deputies. Maybe not all council members toured it when we first opened it. So I think this would be a good chance for all of us to attend. And also the public safety commissioners to attend to, um, see the operations and potentially ask questions of if there's been items that have come up over the years. So again, watch for Adra, but your, here's your official invite, um, to attend that. Um, all right, we're still on the city council reports and updates. Does anyone else have anything?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, right.
Just a quick, uh, public service announcement for residents. Uh, the Elk River Star News is moving to a subscription model. There are official newspaper as well as the newspaper of the E D A now. Um, and so residents are probably aware because they've been sending out notices, but I believe starting in August, uh, residents will have to pay for their uh, subscription to that.
Which is very unfortunate.
But understandable.
Absolutely. I thought their article, they did a good job trying to explain it. So um, hopefully residents sign up for that. Um, next is staff reports and updates. Adam.
Mayor, council, as a follow-up to that, they, they do include a coupon code and, and at least the previous edition for a pretty substantial, uh, discount, uh, if you do subscribe now. Uh, so just a follow-up there. Uh, if you don't know already, uh, County State Eight Highway thirty six has been closed as of earlier today due to flooding. Uh, reopening is weather dependent and unknown at this point in time. Uh, it is posted on social media and the city website as well. Uh, reminder to council member Dunlap and Dahl, Public Works Subcommittee is canceled for this Wednesday. Uh, and a reminder, next Thursday, city offices will be closed for the Independence Day holiday.
I assume it's canceled because of your event?
Uh, no, we just had a lack of agenda items for this meeting.
Okay.
But we'll build them up in July, so.
Okay.
Nothing further, Mayor.
Right. Adra.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna let everybody know that the August thirteenth primary absentee voting starts this Friday.
Madam Mayor, quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Adra, do you know, uh, how many election judges are we still short?
Uh, we're gonna be okay, I think, for the, the primary, but we will need more judges for the November election. So if somebody's interested, please fill out an application and send that in. We'll get you scheduled and trained.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dave.
No updates. Thanks, Mayor.
Dan?
Mayor Noah, further update.
Right, Ron?
No updates, Mayor.
Okay. Daryl.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So I just, uh, give you a little update. We've been meeting with the architects and with the construction management firm, uh, working on the design for the station. We expect to, uh, have some updated color choices, uh, for you to review uh, in July. So we can finalize the color selections of the exterior of the building so that we can move forward with the final, uh, design elements. On June eighteenth, uh, in this room, we had, uh, Safety Day, uh, Sheriff's Office and and emergency services participated in that. We had about sixty, uh, attendees. I'll be happy to report that I did not have to participate in the karate, so there was no work comp claim. On July sixteenth, we will be, um, down at the farmer's market. And again, on August sixth, those are senior days at the farmer's market. So we'll be there uh, providing information on the emergency services project, answering questions, if anybody's interested. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daryl.
Thank you.
Any updates from Wright County?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, just a couple of things. The flooding was mentioned, so we've already taken some calls on that. So we've had, uh, a bulletin put up about people going on barricades and so forth. Um, so that's already been addressed on our end. Um, I might as well bring up North Star. Um, nothing bad. So everything's been good in the last couple of weeks. So everything is good there.
And you plan to attend.
Yep.
Correct.
Yep, I will be there. And then just kind of a question, I guess. I know from previous years, Otsego is notorious, notorious for being one of the worst cities for fireworks during July fourth.
Well, that's not good to be known for that.
So I guess I'll ask the council, I don't know how you guys want us to enforce that specifically. Particularly over July fourth. Maybe it was addressed in previous years, but I wasn't here, so.
Madam Mayor, can we table that item?
Basically go, ooh.
Yeah. I guess I could comment our, George, you know, for Jordan, just in the past, Altman's was usually worked that, during that time. And he was, he would answer all the calls and, and was pretty aggressive with enforcement on that. Um, I believe that was his take on, I mean, it's everyone in the green, it's not at our, he just he was receiving a lot of calls from neighbors that couldn't sleep, children, dogs.
Okay.
Safety.
Noted.
Madam Mayor.
I, they know that's not an, an answer. We, he had never in the past, I guess, asked for what our direction on it was. It was we leave enforcement to the Wright County Sheriff's Office.
Yeah.
Um, obviously when a call comes in, you take the call. No calls are turned away, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's just, every city's different with, like, some, like, we, I think we spoke and maybe it was last month's meeting about, uh, golf carts and so forth. Like, cities are different, so I wasn't sure what the stance was or the, the temperature, so I do know.
Madam Mayor, smiling. I think too, it was so dry. It's been so dry previous years that also fires were a very large concern. Also not to mention, I mean, as well as the noise and
It's awful. It's terrible, so.
Well, good luck to you.
I'll be in the state of New York that day, so.
Okay. Well, it's just interesting that you make the comment that we're known for notoriously heavy fireworks.
Like based on my pa- pa- I, I haven't, I didn't pull city by city numbers, but it seems like Otsego is
So and that's based on call complaints, right?
What's that?
That's based on call complaints.
Correct. That come in through us.
Okay.
It's, we really is another one that sticks out to me, especially for a small town, believe it or not. What, elaborate on that. Correct. So it's actually. Yeah, it's, it's actually a pretty difficult one to enforce because by the time we do get there, just depending on response time, five, ten minutes, people are smart enough to get rid of all their paraphernalia. You know it probably came from there. You might have a witness came from there, but it's really hard to have, to even write a citation unless you witness it or happen to be really close to the call when it comes out. So it's pretty tough. Well, there is, if we don't have trouble, we'll touch.
Yeah. Your officer, I mean, obviously we appreciate the deputies are out taking those calls. We would hope that residents are respectful to their neighbors. And I, I think that's a fair statement, right?
Yeah. Absolutely.
But I, I do from time to time get lots of emails from certain areas. And as you said, you can't prove it, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a really hard one. Cause it's so, like, so quick. You shoot three or four off and then it's gone. And there's no evidence really to track it down. And even if there is, it's usually a party of twenty people. Who do you, you know? So. But, but I, I've written the ticket before though, so.
Oh.
Okay. I think if you ask Sergeant Altman, he would tell you that this is his favorite holiday.
He's, he's not gonna comment.
A lot of people share that sentiment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I have nothing else. Any questions for me?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant.
All right, if no one else has anything, then a motion to adjourn would be in order. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you all for attending. The meeting is ended. Have a great evening.